Okay. Moving right along here. Okay, administrative section. Have a motion please.
Hello.
Okay, Mr. Councillor, Mrs. Secretary of State. Ms. Lucas will talk now.
Okay. Item A is the submission of a request to the State Board of Education for the continuation of a countywide waiver of policy 2510 assuring the quality of education regulations for education programs, section 7.2.4c instructional minutes. That will allow all schools to institute a one-hour delay schedule each Wednesday to facilitate collaborative team, future teams for the 2014, 2014 school year. And the attachment is there. Item B is the adoption of new or revised county policies as follows, effective immediately. All of them are listed on the table. Item C, a revised salary schedule, number 17, with the addition of a secondary assistant band director, level four, attachment. Item D, to declare the following school buses surplus property and donate to the Lincoln County Firefighters Association for easier annual fire school and education of firefighters. Item E, an agreement with Kathy LaJoy to provide transportation services for students and parts pre-kept for the 2014, 2014 school year. It's pending for the county's files. No questions?
Okay. Anybody have anything? You know I'm on the quick. Item C, a revised salary schedule for the secondary band directors. Now, if the board throughs this, are we going to post that position?
Yes, you are.
I thought you were ready. Okay. Anybody have anything else in administration? Okay. No, I'll call for a question. All in favor?
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Again, all yes vote on the administrative lines. Okay, we're going to go to finance. Have a motion please.
Mr. Curry, Ms. Wilkinson.
Birdy.
Okay. Item A, scheduled invoices totaling $224,000, $521.30. Invoices, schedules attached, and invoices are ready for review in the finance office. Item B, preliminary computations for fiscal year 14, 15. Now, I'll give your hand out in just a minute. And then item C, the financial statements for November. So, would you have any questions on the financial statements for November? Did you send that out?
Okay.
Okay. So, any questions on that?
No.
Okay. The final comps just came out today, and we are getting the tax penalty. And it's been a long meeting, and I'm going to just highlight the few things that you really need to know. On the right-hand side, just go to handout, the third page. It should look something like this. Okay. You know, we're all, everybody's on board with the tax penalty, so there's two different penalties on this tax penalty. One of them is the 8 percent penalty, which a few years ago, the state allowed the counties to keep nine, let me rephrase that. They allowed to keep 8 more percent of the local collections than they previously lost. Okay? So, one of the penalties of not having your assessed value high enough is you have to give up that 8 percent. Okay? So, that's the one penalty. And then the other penalty is they're going to go ahead and do the say-date formula as if we were going to collect that additional money. So, it's a two-pronged penalty. Okay? And then, the one good thing I wanted to share, it hasn't been like, well, your county has not been doing the right thing all these years. I mean, you can look at, oh, nine, we were okay. Ten, we were okay. Eleven, we were okay. And then, the first time that we popped up was 2012, and it looks like somebody, you know, did something. Thirteen, we were okay again. And then, it just popped up again here in 2014, which is the one that really counts. So, there's three counties that have got the penalty. And if you look at this flag down here, Lincoln County, and you see the percentage penalty, it's 230,000. The assessment is 348,000. The total penalty for the taxes is $578. But if you look at, look what's happening in Mon County, they're going to lose $3.8 million. One county, $845,000. And this is a talking points that Joe Bonnada has put together, just, he just sent this out today. You know, if you want to read through it, but on the next page, you know, it talks about that, he says, penalizing the certain county boards should be viewed as being in violation of the constitutional mandate of the state providing a thorough and efficient education to all schools. So, you know, they wanted the State Department agrees with it, but for now, it is what it is. We have a penalty. So, that's the one bad part, the bad news I have to tell you. So, now, let's go back to, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can make it. Yeah, it gets worse. Okay. So, what I did was put this together. Okay, here's a different test in the formula. Here's our 2015, there's 2014, and this will tell you where the changes. And step one is professional personnel. So, look, bam, there's $194,000 gone. Professional personnel.
And when you say gone, are you saying that the state is going to fund that, and they did in this current year?
Right. We've got $194,000 less in professional personnel.
For next year compared to this year?
Yes. Okay. Service personnel, $75,000 less. Employee fixed calls, $32,000 less. Transportation, $147,000 less. Bus replacements, $72,000. That's pretty much a bus. Professional student support, electric nurses and counselors, that's funded the same. Other expenses, $2,000, subs, $6,000, faculty incentive, $1,000. And let's see, step seven, actually, that's one that went up, $21,000. And step seven B, which is technology piece, went up $52,000. But in the end, this number, this $481,000, that has two pieces to it. It has the penalty, the 8 percent penalty, plus we lost 50 students in enrollment. So, we're joined together here. Okay? So, that's $481,000 less. And then, this chunk right here is the assessment penalty. Okay? So, when we merge all this together, we're looking at the $820,000 less next year, put all this together. So, I mean, we're looking at some serious issues.
Let me clarify something, Birdy. Does the 8 percent penalty, do that have an impact on the professional personnel decrease?
Well, I'm not sure, Steve, how he, where Joe, or where they pulled this from, but it's just, I know that it's, it's in this group here. I know there's that 8 percent penalty in that group, plus I know we lost funding for, let's see, it's actually two, three, about six people we lost funding for. So, that's all in here also.
I mean, if part of the number decreased by 50, I wouldn't have thought those numbers were that great.
I think it's got both in there. It has to have both.
Some were the 8.
Yes, it has to have both. And that's why I said that that 481 is that 8 percent plus the loss of enrollment. And this one here, see, that's your local tax collections. So, last year, they, you know, I know you guys have heard that we're going to have all this money. Well, it doesn't have to matter how much the taxes go up, we just get to keep a certain portion of it, you know, it's factored out of the formula. So, you know, last year, we were to get 22 million, well, 2.6 we collected at the office, so, or at the local courthouse. So, you know, it's not like we're going to get all this extra money if our taxes do go up. They're just going to, see how they bumped this number up? So, they just bumped that number up. So, we don't really get it. They just send us less. Okay? Okay, so, everybody good?
Clear one thing up for you, Birdy. The problem up in the assessor's office, how much does that actually cost for us?
The $578, Fred, right here. Now, this is, and this is Joe's calculation that he just sent out this morning, $578,000. And it's showing up. Okay, see this, see the percentage penalty? That's the 8 percent. That's $230,000, and that ties into, right here, $230,000 is the 8 percent penalty of that 481. Then, the rest of it is enrollment-related. Okay? And then, this, the 339, that is strictly assessment penalty. Of course, there's a little bit of difference because Joe's, you know, trying to get this together, and probably did it a little bit sooner, maybe than the preliminary comps come out, but no, those are ballpark numbers that he's got together here.
Which is the better, which is the more accurate, Birdy?
The preliminary comps are going to be the more accurate.
The first set?
Just a minute, Sean.
Sorry.
These, those were the preliminary comps, right here.
Okay.
And this was the final comps here, last year.
Gotcha.
So, we're looking at a substantial difference. Okay, any other questions on that? And of course, you know, we have to proceed that we're losing this money, and that's the bad part. Because here we are at the end of the year, and the comps come out today, and it's there. So, I think we should have a pastor proceed. Because even if something would happen, which is going to be way past personnel season, so, right there.
I did speak with the superintendent of Montague County today, and it was maybe an hour before we actually got these numbers, and he, Dr. Ferris, and his board president had met with a group of delegate members and senators trying to explain, and he gave a chart of just like what Birdy had given here, of what areas it would affect for them. And of course, you know, he and I both agree this is unconstitutional, and how should we proceed as, as we get these numbers and move forward? But of course, you know, they're in the same situation with personnel season coming and having to make those cuts, because we have no guarantee that it would change. And what could we do as a free county, we're going to get together in January with superintendent of Montague County, and try to move forward with whatever it is that we need to do? Not much sympathy out there, he didn't feel across the state in regard to what has happened. He seems to think maybe there will be some other counties feeling the same kind of impact that we will next year. But right now, it's three of us, and we're having to deal with this together, so.
I don't, I think we have a general agreement that we think that taxes should be assessed, appraised properly everywhere. And I can understand maybe some counties feel like they, or the county has others have it, and we should be made to do so. I don't disagree with them, and I think we all just disagree, but why is the school board being the one that's been chosen to take the penalty when we had no, it's not an issue that we deal with, it's not beyond our control? But I'm glad, Chris, that you had spoken with the superintendent of Montague County. What I would like for the board, I'd like for us to come back here on January the 7th of next year, or next meeting, and like, extend action items where we formally take this issue to court. I felt for a long while that it was unconstitutional. Joe Bonnada is as much as saying that, and I think you, your doctor, what's his name?
Devon.
Devon. I think everybody has a general feel that that's, you know, the whole Lincoln County rec case was all based on equity of funding that was finally resolved, and now, they're throwing this in there, and it's just going to throw it out and kill them. So, that's what I'd like to see us do, is to go ahead and act, and ideally, all three counties may participate and have, you know, we could all use the same attorney, the firm, and deal with this thing. And like has been pointed out by Birdy and Chris, both, it's not going to get resolved in quickly. So, that means that we're going to be forced to go ahead, and the administration is, as far as how we're going to, you know, take, accept this, or not accept it, and deal with it. But at least, you know, I'd like to see us to go ahead and get the issue out there when the legislature's in session, and realize that they're going to be, this is going to be something that's going to be notable with everybody, that, you know, that the school boards don't think they're, should be the ones to take this. And what counties are chosen next year, you know, hopefully ours will get resolved here in the next year or so, but, you know, you never know, it may not be, but whatever counties, it shouldn't be the school boards to take it. So, anyway, I'd like to see us, you know, take the initiative of action, that we're going to pursue this in the courts. And I think we want to get some support, and I think we'll get it from other counties, and I think we'll get it from state agencies too. But once again, that doesn't have a tradition to her decision, I think, because she's going to have to look long and hard at it, deal with this thing, and it's not going to be pretty.
Birdy, how does the tax rates, and I know nothing about tax rates, but in 2009, we passed, 2010, we passed, 2011, we passed, and then in 2012, we did not. So, we didn't get penalized in 2012.
This is the first year of penalties.
Okay. And then, in 2013, we passed, and then, 2014, we have not. How does that?
You know, it's based on the sales ratio in your county, so, and I don't know all the intricate details of the formulas, but, you know, I, maybe, to me, it appears like there was a bump in property values for 13, or for 14, and the values weren't appropriately raised up to go along with those increased values of sales. You know, it may have sold a piece of property, sold for $50,000, was kind of averaged in 13, and then by 14, you know, that same piece of property had bumped up to $60,000, but it wasn't, you know, adjusted upward countywide. It all goes on that sales ratio, you know, what property's selling for.
I don't know, from hearing the assessor, yeah, and I think when Josh spoke with us, and I've heard him speak to a couple of other groups, within our retirement group, that he talks in terms that certain data had to be supplied each year, but it wasn't necessarily always the same data. And it's possible that we might not, Lincoln County might not have been in compliance with this in some of these other years, had that certain data been provided, but they were, and this is complicated, I don't know really what the issue, but it's what's presented or what's submitted that year, and what results you get. So, if you weren't submitting this particular information here, then your county wouldn't show up as getting the penalty. And once again, I don't know much other than this here, and him talk about it, but it seems to me like there was four different factors involved here, and counties would submit these. And it gets down, of course, this year, when it's no longer, it's not an iffy thing, everybody had to deal with that particular aspect of it, but that may be part of it too, depending on what was submitted and given year by, you know, previous assessors or something.
That was just under pressure, it'd been like that every year.
Well.
Yeah, almost did, almost did until I thought this.
Well, you know, this is what, 2006 or '07 is when the law passed, right?
Seven, I believe.
And then, you know, and so, they were giving until this coming year, assessors were the six years to correct the deficiencies you had, or you were going to get penalized. And I guess they thought, well, you know, in six years, they're going to see, hey, we're going to deal with this, but obviously, everybody did.
According to this, five out of seven years, that's good.
Well, but that's where, I think, if we were to talk to the assessor, he would tell us that there's different things that have to be submitted each year. And once again, I'm talking about something, I just listened to him, and just know enough to question what was, you know, what he was saying, but, and it may not have anything to do with that area, I don't know, but depending on what you turn in, is what you get a response back from the state tax department or who says it. I don't know any more about this, I'm without that.
Well, I don't know much about it either, but from my understanding, when this is all changed, it bumps us to a different level. Will it stay that way forever? I know that all the elected officials are supposed to get a big raise from this, they'll all get raises.
From the increased taxes.
Right. So, they're going to get a raise. Is it going to stay this way, that, like, we've been bumped up by maybe one or two numbers from the way they're assessing now?
I guess it stays. If they get it up 90 percent, it'll stay that, or go up to 110 later on.
It may not even matter.
But now, I think once, it's all based on taxes, tax valuations, and once those increase, that puts you in those different categories. I don't really think property's going to decrease in value.
I think they're all going to get a good-sized raise, all the elected officials that set us.
Even the president of the school board gets a raise.
I get a raise all the time. There's no rise.
You're right. I think that's the thing there, in that fine print.
Probably just from one county.
First, next time I talk to the superintendent, I'll ask you if they got a new assessor this year.
They did. They, yes, they got a new one, I guess the same time that we got.
Yeah.
He did tell me that. Because I think he said, his question was, or someone's question when they were meeting, why, if something like this is going on, why would you all not go in and remove the assessor like you do superintendents?
That's exactly what should have happened. I mean, but the assessor government moves, so.
You know, when you remove superintendents of school systems when things are not, then why would you not go in and remove the assessor?
Well, just both of my mind, well, the school board was even involved in this, I mean, other than, I mean, why would we get penalized if we earned, and that's. That's what, but in Montague County, my understanding is the assessor actually went and wanted the rates to go up, but the county commissioner refused to do it.
Oh, that one.
So, that when the assessor tried to do, you know, the right thing, or increase it, but the county, I guess they got so much flack from the public that once everyone had to have their degree, that they put, well, they exerted their influence on commissioners, and they chose not to do it.
Well, it shows here, Mon County was insufficient last year and this year.
That one year, they figured out how to do it. They found one way to do it. Well, that was wonderful, Birdy.
Okay, well, let me go on. Ask today, what did you say, Tricia? Are you sitting down? Yeah, you're sitting down. So, the next attachment with that just has the tax calculations with it. And then, the rest of those documents is the say-date formula, the preliminary comps. And, you know, you can compare us with other counties, because it has all 55 counties listed, and it goes through the stats, just like the summary that I gave you. So, you guys can, that's just for information purposes. And I've got one other little small chart that I would like to go over with you real quickly, and it's on the left-hand side of your packet. This compares our enrollment and our positions, and this one's pretty important. It's on the left-hand side, it's going to be the nice color copy. And again, we have several years for comparison, and we're going to be looking at column H. So, here's, here's what we turned in for enrollment. There's a decrease of 45. FTE adjusted, 5.6. Total is down 50.6. So, that's what held us on our personnel. So, then, we moved to this group here, when we turned in our certified list in October, we had 281.33 professional people, employees. And if you look, we're down, we were down 6.17 compared to previous year. But if you look at the funding, the prior year, they funded 270. This year, they're only funding 267, so there's where we lost 3.6 positions in funding. So, we are, well, let me go, let me go on down. This next group is our counselors and nurses. We had 10. We're going to be funded for 7.87. We're over 2.13, and there was just a change of a .04 on the funding there. So, when we look at professionals, if we do nothing, we're going to be over 16.29 professional people, and those are the expensive ones. Service.
Next year, we're already 18.
Well, no, but we did this same thing last year, preliminary comps. Last year, we were over 18 when we did the preliminary comps. This year, we're over 16. Service people, we got 190.473 employees, and we went up on our service, because if you look at the previous year, it was 180, so we're up 9. And I'll tell you what that is, is the Medicaid. We've had to move people out of Medicaid because Medicaid money never would, just dried up. There was a change in the billing procedures, so there's no longer all this money for Medicaid. So, you know, we're just getting hit from all sides. So, I've had to move a bunch of people out of Medicaid funding into the general funds. Money's just not there.
With the service, the people were there.
The aides, yeah.
The aides.
The people were here, but we had a different funding, so now, the county is having to take those.
Is that strictly service people that get funded that way?
I had one, there was one nurse funded through Medicaid, and not only, but one teacher went off, and I've just had to pull this back, and the only thing that Medicaid funds now is a few aides. Actually, I think there's eight aides in Medicaid now. But, so that's why you're seeing that increase there, there's just no funding in Medicaid anymore. So, we look, we're over 40, or 23 on service, a total of 40. Last year, at the same time, was over 30. So, you know, we've got some pretty tough decisions, lots of problems. Now, down to the bottom, this is once we get our final budgets ready to go, I'll plug in these numbers, but I'll show you where we were at when we did our final budget. We did our final budget last year, we were only going to be over 19. After we, you know, did our grips and termination, we were only going to be over 19. So, we worked from, we started at being over 30, we made our cuts, we were over 19. So, this year, it'll be harder, we're over 40. So, we're going to get to some magic number of about 20. I can keep going, wait until I can eat, for stress, knowing things that we're going to have to.
Now, this does, and this is based upon us being penalized, correct?
Yeah. Well, actually, the penalty doesn't have any effect on this, because that one is simply enrollment and number of people that are going to be funded. So, the penalty doesn't say, I'm not going to fund you for these positions. The penalty is a dollar a half.
Right. In the background, that it's lurking there, isn't it?
Yeah. It is because where we might say we were over the 40, we would probably be able to absorb that, some of them. But with that penalty, there is no money there to absorb if it's not funded by the state. If it's over positions, we are not going to be able to absorb as many.
Just like any county, these counties that are better off, they, they're way over the formula, but they're able to pay for it or anything.
And actually, there's a sort of near the middle of your formula, it'll tell you, you know, you can look at a county and see how many people they're carrying over on the professionals, and how many they're carrying over. professionals, and how many they're carrying over on service. Whereas a lot of counties now are trying to get to that zero now, you know, they're really, really pushing to get to the, being right on the dot. But I don't know that we could ever do it here.